Please.
I think you should pray. I'll say this.
Motion by Dr. Dawson.
Great.
Right, by Mr. Evans. Seconded by Dr. Dawson. All in favor, signify by raising your hand. And we do have a need for an executive session for personnel and just personnel.
We're going to take a session for discussion personnel.
Okay, motion by Dr. Dawson. Seconded by Mr. Evans. All in favor, signify by raising your hand. And that's all. We shouldn't be long, as Dr. Evans said. If y'all will excuse us for a few minutes, we'll have you right back in here. We hope.
Art, look, I can send, I'll call up to you there. We've got one from Hubbard, PBIS. That will be making money for PBIS incentives. We've got three from T.G. Scott for Relay for Life. And all that will benefit Relay for Life. And married persons, we have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven. We have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. None of those are athletics. We actually have seven of those are basketball, that are just missing a football. And the basketball, Zumba night, selling t-shirts, chocolate sale, basketball night at Jones', another basketball night at Jones', and another Zumba night. And then the tennis team, we'll be selling tennis apparel, and tennis apparel, banners and t-shirts to be posted. And then we've got Muir Theta with, I think it's a man, for selling vouchers for the hockey game and selling mini pies for celebration of pie day. And that's all.
No complaints, from one to the other. We need to prove the progress.
I'm sorry that we hit the last we posted some point today. We checked. Motion by Mr. Evans to approve the consent items. Seconded by, oh, I, okay, seconded by Dr. Dawson.
With baseball on the ears?
Ooh, baseball. And I think we already approved them. No?
I think they're sending me in.
No, they ain't.
Being no further discussion, all in favor of the motion to approve the consent items, signify by raising your hand. And that's everyone. All right. Now, we're up to the senior high school of achievement and success.
There's one field trip. It's at Beta Club at the high school. Ms. Laura English will be taking a group on January 23rd. Coming back on the 24th, they'll compete at the state Beta Club convention. That's going on.
We're already putting aside, in case we back up. Maybe I'm skipping. Maybe I'm skipping.
All right. We have focus areas that we work on as a school district. And one of those areas has to do with how we help all children succeed in school. And one way that we're doing that is through a new program that we call multi-tiered system of supports. And that support has kind of changed, the definitions have changed. And we've asked Jenny Rooks, who's Director of Instructional Student Supports, if she would come tonight and briefly talk to us about that, and talk to the board members about what that means and how that pyramid actually helps our children improve in school. So I'm gonna turn it over to Jenny at this time.
Thank you.
Pull it up.
Yep. So the state has recently changed our pyramid. It used to be four tiers, and now they have aligned it with the national model of three tiers of support. And so the fourth tier was identified as maybe a holding place for students with special needs. But what we know is that students who have special needs also have strengths. And so they don't need services in all areas. And they've removed that fourth tier because they didn't want it to appear like there was a special environment for them. What they've moved to is a three-tier model, which is fluid, so students can be in any of those tiers. So I'll talk through a little bit about how we identify those tiers and what those supports would look like. So you can see in the model that we have the whole child at the center of anything that we do. So we consider each student individually. We do that through data teams at our curriculum meetings. And we look at each child individually to see exactly what strengths they have, what interests they have. Our CTAE comes into play at that moment where we want to plug them into something like cosmetology or ag to make sure that they're in an area of interest so that they can be successful when they leave us. And the green arrows around here identifying their needs, implementing a plan, that really aligns well with our Plan Do Check Act here in Monroe County. In addition, you can see a lot of things that Ms. Elder has been working on to the left. The screening process is the new Star Screener that we've implemented that moves from kindergarten through eighth grade. And we look at where are our students so that we can help to intervene and accelerate them. We have progress monitoring, and through our data teams, we do that all the time. I think every teacher would agree that they have more data maybe than what they need. Database decision-making, and then a multi-level of prevention. So we want to be able to reach out to the community and help to identify students early so that they can receive the services they need. We have a substantial EL population, so if, you know, language is an issue for you, we want to teach you vocabulary in pre-K or kindergarten before you ever come to us so that we can help to close those gaps, get you on track. And then we'll go to, can you skip past this one? So we're gonna do a quick little activity, and we're gonna look at cooking. Green will be a one for you, yellow will be a two, and then we'll have red be a three. And so you'll just raise your fingers to tell us where you are on this pyramid. But for cooking, I can Pinterest ideas, I never need a recipe, I could probably win Master Chef. Or a two would be I only eat prepackaged food or need detailed recipes to make anything that's edible. Or a three would be red, we eat out all the time, I can't even boil anything. So where would you, where did you think you are? I'm probably a two. Yes. So that kind of shows us where we're all at different places, and it just depends on our interest areas and things that we're good at. And so we need to look at each person as an individual, that we're not all gonna fit into education in the same mold. And sometimes education needs to meet the child. And if we could go forward to, we'll go past that one. And here is our pyramid now. Again, it's three tiers. There is no one place, no tier specifies an environment. So eighty percent of your students should be in the green, which is our tier-one instruction. So, you know, we look for great guided reading, we do guided reading walkthroughs, guided math walkthroughs. We're looking for good instruction. We're looking for PBIS to be present in the school so that there's a culture of success and recognition. Fifteen percent of our students would be at the level two. And this could be either where the teachers are pulling smaller groups in their classrooms, or it might be the early intervention program, or the EIP program, or the remediation program at the secondary schools. And then we have a tier-three level. And these are students who maybe need a specific program that's run with fidelity to help close a gap for a specified amount of time. And each program is different for what it spells out as the recipe for success. So we have worked really diligently with Ms. Elder and the instructional coaches to align our interventions because sometimes an intervention can take up to three years to be truly successful with fidelity. So we need to make sure that we have an implementation process that can last that long to help those kids close those gaps. And so we have things like Read 180, SRA, a lot of just research-based, really good practices that are in place in our schools to help close those gaps. So you may wonder now, where do some of the specified categories fall? And a 504, a student with a 504 really can fall at any tier. It may just be an allergy, and you may still be at tier-one. It may be something more substantial like ADHD, where you need wraparound support and services. So those can really be at any tier depending on how the child functions in the classroom. SST still is at tier-three. It is meant to be an intervention that is research or evidence-based, that's performed for an extended period of time. We say usually up to 12 weeks to make sure that we can see the trend for the student public there, closing that gap or if they need more support. And then IP, I believe, is next. And again, that now, we've just looked at their strengths and their needs, and we plug them into what they really need for programs. But if they have strengths, we're also looking to accelerate them. So we have students who are blended, who are in some alpha classes at the middle school but are also receiving some services for a processing deficit. So you can have a child that's maybe has blended services. But again, we try to plug them into their interests to keep them motivated in school. So we're working very closely with Ms. Caldwell on CTAE and a lot of the programs that she designs so that they're motivated to graduate. Are there any questions about MTSS?
Sounds good.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we're moving into the student staff recognition portion of the program. We're gonna start with Hubbard Elementary. And at this time, I'd call on Principal Jay Johnston to come up and present his awards from Hubbard.
Thank you, Dr. Pigman. It's always a pleasure each year to get this night set aside for us to recognize students and staff alike with a lot of hard work and extra work that they do. I'll start with students tonight. Students, when I call your name, if you would, start coming up, I'm gonna say a few things about you and what this, you know, recognition is for. But for the most part, the students we're recognizing tonight are for outstanding service and leadership at Hubbard Elementary in a lot of different facets and a lot of different areas in our clubs, a lot of morning clubs, kids spending extra time doing things. But these kids have kind of set themselves, you know, apart from the rest of the group in a lot of ways and exhibiting the leadership skills that we want to develop in our students throughout their educational career. So starting with art club, I'd like to recognize Kamora Sims. If she would come forward at this time. Just a few comments from her advisor, Ms. Southern. Well-known student, pushes herself in extracurricular activities. She's not only in the morning art club, but she's also part of hydroponics in the morning as well. So she's kind of double dipping at that time and stretching herself. Kind and considerate to others, always lending a hand to help those in need. Very talented art student and is up for any challenge thrown her way.
Miss Sims. Congratulations.
Next student is Trinity Upright. Part of a reading club that we started this year with Mrs. Carr in the media center each morning. She comes to the media center each day, ready to read with second-grade students, leading them along the way. Very reliable, willing to do anything that we ask of her to do. She's always patient, which is very important in leading younger kids with a reading partner. Trinity Upright. The next four students are gonna kind of come in tandem here because I'm gonna start next with chess club. And we have two students we're gonna recognize tonight, Deione White and Connor Carr, who have set theirselves aside as junior officers. Chess club, Dr. Harris each morning, they come early to help set up the lab. Exemplary great patience and care and instructing and mentoring new students to the club. And each of these young men exemplifies what it means to be members of the Hubbard Chess Club. Deione and Connor. Next two, and which I don't know if both of these are here, Kelly Martin, I know is here, and Josiah Baldwin. Just have Kelly. They're part of hydroponics. Both of these students are very, very interested in what Ms. Walker has going on in hydroponics lab, asking about their plans, always checking on systems and order quality. After all the other students leave out each morning, they come back and help, hang around to help Mrs. Walker kind of clean up and prepare for the next day. Kelly Martin. And our final student tonight, last but not least, is Rachel Soski. Rachel is being recognized for safety patrol, and she was, and I recognized our safety patrol students last year, but she was not only a inaugural member, but she's really been on safety patrol before there was a safety patrol because she was hanging out with Ms. Harris out front every morning. I think since first grade, but I know since second grade a lot of mornings. Grown into a very mature, dependable young lady with a heart for serving others, and Rachel Soski.
Picture. I'll pull you up inside so we can take a picture around the sun.
Come on, Connor.
Come on, y'all. You good?
All right, Kamora.
Y'all got all facing the right way?
Kelly, we hope you should just get that far. It's perfect. Big smiles, everybody. Keep smiling. Look this way. All right.
Good, Diane? All right, another big hand for these kids. All right. Thanks, Miss Staff. Before I call these individuals up, one of the things that kind of set this group of teachers or staff that I'm recognizing tonight is that, and we do a lot of pushing, we do a lot of pushing with teachers to go out to conferences, to present, to talk about all the good things that we have going on in the system. But each of these that are recognized tonight, not only were willing to do that, but they spent summer break, part of them spent fall break, spent the fall break this year, spent weekends their own time. I mean, it's not where we were giving them time from work there in school. They were going when we're already off work and spending time. So that really means a lot to us. But not only, not only doing that, each of these are also have presented multiple times at different conferences throughout the state. And some are being, you know, asked to come back to even more, more than I can fund for them to go to. But with that said, starting with Ms. Alexandra Lamping. She presented this past summer at the STEM Belusa Conference. Integrate her ELA and reading into STEM as well as her use of technology, you're leading the way for us there, Ms. Lamping. Next, Dr. Kimberly Harris. She has presented at multiple conferences. The latest one that she presented at was Innovations in Teaching Conference and was the only elementary-level presentation there. Most of the presentations were college professors presenting. And of course, from that, you know, caught the ear of a lot of people and has been asked to present at additional conferences. So we're trying to work that out as well. But not only that, in local civic groups, she's presented with a church group just last month as well. Dr. Harris. The next two or next three, we're gonna be getting it off, like Ms. Farm was able to make it. But these two presented this past summer for the second year in a row at the Georgia STEM Conference in Athens. So being awarded back-to-back years. Start with Mrs. Walker, if you would, start up. She, as a lot of you know, started our hydroponics program at Hubbard Elementary. And that has grown and really become a, you know, a staple of what we do with STEM teaching at our, at our school. And it's becoming, quickly becoming, you know, gaining statewide notoriety and a model for other schools. Because being a STEM school, we have to, twice a year, we open up the doors for schools to come from throughout the state to kind of look at what we're doing. She's just a model. And she's just a model. She may be more proud of that, but here we are as well. The hydroponics program is really a state of the art. It is becoming, you know, the model for other STEM schools throughout the state. Ms. Kara Davis. Again, second year in a row is being picked to present at the STEM conference, and they did that over fall break. Some of the other stuff that she's done, it has been, you know, kind of leading the charge. She reached out to Mr. Hamilton at Fine Arts Center a few years ago on their light sounding to start bringing in and using the actual Fine Arts Center as a teaching facility and not just somewhere we go in for performances. That has freed T.G. Scott and K.B. Sutton, are both doing the same now as well. But her, you know, leadership in upper grades for technology and STEM is unsurpassed. All of these ladies, you know, as far as, you know, STEM is concerned, Dr. Harris, you know, a lot of you have read or seen about the Bat Habitat Project that we had, where the only school in the state of Georgia has, have had two DNR Conservation Teachers of the Year, and see who was the latest for last year. So again, Ms. Davis, Ms. Walker, Dr. Harris, and Ms. Lamping, these are just a few of our leaders at Hubbard Elementary. All right. Service awards in Monroe County are awarded to employees with continuous completed service to the system in five-year increments. These awards are based on the last hire entered into our school system. The Board of Education and Administration appreciates the commitment, dedication, and loyalty of the following employees from Samuel Hubbard Elementary and later in the program, Monroe County Achievement Center. Monroe County Schools recognizes the importance of quality service from quality employees to the overall success of students in our school system. Thanks to each of you for all that you do to ensure that the Monroe County School System continues to be one of the top-performing school systems in the state of Georgia. As we call your name, please come up and accept your certificate and pen. Please remain up front until all recipients from your school have been recognized and the picture taken. From Hubbard, with five years' experience, first, Darrell Baker. Five years' experience, Verona Mays. Five years of service, Kelly Simmons. Five years of service, Stephanie Steed. Five years of service, Christina Stevens. Ten years of service, Marnay Booth. Ten years of service, Ty Nguyen. Ten years of service, Heather Smith. Fifteen years of service, Denise Jackson. Twenty years of service, Valvoline Moore. And the final recognition, with 25 years of service, Alicia Atwater. All right, congratulations. At this time, we'll call MCAC Principal Brady Caldwell for his student recognitions.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Brady Caldwell. I am the principal at the Monroe County Achievement Center. And I'd like to take some time to recognize some special students that are with us. These students are our 12 for life, students that actually, they're state employees with the Department of Corrections. This partnership was started about 10 years ago with the Department of Corrections in which they established a work-based, learning-type program where they allowed our students to come over and actually be state employees. It's so cool that they get an actual state ID badge. They have to check in and clock in. So what that job does, it allows them to get some real-world work experience in a real professional setting, much like we are in the school system. So it teaches them those soft skills that they would need to go out there and be successful after graduation. And they're assigned mentors, and those mentors kind of see them through that process to help them with accountability, just what it takes to, to complete tasks in a timely fashion, and what it means to show up every day on time. And those are those real-world skills that our students need outside of the academia that they get during the normal school day. So what I'd like to do is recognize these students. I have three seniors and one junior who's a part of the program. And did I mention they get real paychecks? Nobody's, nobody's ever let me borrow anything yet, but I'm waiting on, they should treat me to lunch one day. So I'd like to first recognize Andrew Barberich. He works in the Health Services Department, and so you see, he actually has a real job over there. Andrew, Andrew's brother was in the program last year, he graduated with us, and Andrew wanted to feel right on in, and he's done a good job doing that. Up next is Samuel Breyones, he goes by Jordan. Jordan works in the IT department, and he helps out a lot over there with them with the technology they're doing in the IT department. And it's been real fun to see Jordan kind of come out of the shell a little bit with us. The next one is Destiny Jordan. Destiny works in the Education Department, and she's just a lovely personality, and she has just a real sweet personality in everybody's mentality over there, so they like her to smile and laugh.
She's smiling now.
And then the last but not least is Seth Hammond. Seth Hammond also works in the Education Department, and if he spends any time with us at Achievement Center, he's the president of the Achievement Center. He sets rules and always has suggestions as to how he wants to see the achievements of the world. Nine out of nine percent of it, I listen to, excuse me, nine out of nine percent of it, I don't listen to. At one percent, he's pretty much on track, but we love him all. And those are our 12 for life students.
Can you see the sign a little bit? You good?
I can. Am I ready? One, two, three, everybody. Keep smiling.
Congratulations, students. Finally, we have our Years of Service recognition for the Achievement Center. We have two employees to recognize tonight, one just went and sat out. Ten years of service, Brady Caldwell. And ten years of service, Vanessa Jones. And ten years of service, Vanessa Jones.
Yo, great, that is a...
Big smiles, everybody. One, two, three. Here's a... He's smiling. Okay. We got one smiling.
Congratulations. Take a few minutes, a ten-minute break, and we do have some refreshments. We do have refreshments outside.
In the spirit of moving things right along, our financial statements are as presented. Everything seems is in order, in line with where it should be this time of year. Our local tax money is starting to roll in. Just last week, we got eight-hundred-and-thirty thousand. We should see another sizable check before we go out on break and hopefully get some of that money transferred up to Georgia Fund One and start earning some interest on it. But I included the general fund and our federal programs. Those are the two that have the most activity right now. Our capital projects is kind of in a lull. They're fixing to pick back up as you'll learn in a little bit, but we're all current with our bills and everything's going well. And you should have gotten an email regarding the audit for FY18. We will discuss that at the January meeting.
Everybody get that?
Thank you, just came with that.
Yeah, it just came out afternoon.
In the afternoon.
Yes, it came out today.
All right. Any questions for Mr. Johnson? All right. Thank you. School bus purchase.
Okay. I can show you the right folder. In the 2020 funding, the state bond issuances, we were granted one additional school bus, and the state will actually provide funding of seventy-seven thousand, two-hundred-and-twenty. So we went out on the state contract and priced one additional school bus, a seventy-two passenger Type C from Peach State Freightliner. This is a Thomas-Bilt bus, and we go ahead and ask them to spec in air conditioning and camera system and radio system and all of the things that we would add to the bus. And so we have a price of ninety-one thousand, eight-hundred-and-ninety-two dollars. So we would recommend using the seventy-seven thousand dollars in state funding, and then the balance of that will be in East Bloss money. But we will actually purchase that bus with a thirty-day delivery, so we'll have it mid-January, and we will roll the bus off, one of our older buses that we have high maintenance on. We will roll that off and put this one online. So any questions? We would just need the approval to purchase and order that bus.
Motion by Mr. Pettigrew for a purchase of us as a part of the recommendation. Second by Dr. Dawson. Any discussion of questions?
And funds are available.
Absolutely. Soon as we spend it, we can get our money from the state, and then we've got some lost money.
There's the contract pricing document that's in there, but it is split, and I don't know if y'all had a chance to look at that.
Thought I flipped it around, so it's just... Okay.
Okay. All in favor, second by our resident, and that's United with also.
Okay. And after a period of advertisements in the local paper and some other distribution, we have closed out the bid window for the building demolition and site improvements at Hubbard, William Hubbard School, and so there were three bidders, and I've got those listed on the agenda. Ogle's Construction at five-hundred-and-fourteen thousand, three-hundred. Renfro Construction at four-eighty-six, seven-oh-seven. And Tristar America at four-fifty-seven. These have been reviewed and made sure all the specs were met, and there's a certification letter from Carter Engineering Group, and the recommendation from him and from us is that we would accept the low bid of four-hundred-and-fifty-seven thousand dollars for the Hubbard project.
That, just so that y'all aware, that will include all the improvements, the takedown of the parts of the building we discussed, everything, buttoning it back up, all the arch fencing walkway. The only thing that's excluded out of here that we will have to add back is the playground. That's the only one.
Was that that rendering where we had last week's meeting, had the grid work, the labors?
Yeah.
That plan there?
It includes all that, it's not just demolition. That's right. We made sure we looked at the plans and...
Initially, the estimate was that the demolition alone was going to cost more than...
We kind of thought that, but Roger and I looked through those plans yesterday, and it has all those other things except for the playground.
What's the acreage, total acreage there?
Well, you know, we got, you're talking about just where we looked, the handprint of tearing out. Where we're at, because we've got a lot of land kind of behind that area back there. I don't know, Roger, you have a guess?
Ten, twelve acres most will be involved?
I would think, yeah. It goes back behind the school and then over toward the river edge area over there.
That's the whole piece, but I mean, all of that will be involved. This will just be the...
That plan for that, was that approved, that rendering of what's going to be put there, when was that approved? Was that approved a couple of years ago, I think?
I don't know that we've ever approved anything. We've just kind of been talking along and along about this is what we were going to do at the Hubbard campus.
We just discussed a lot with the Hubbard alumni, we've had all those meetings.
On everything that we've done there, I brought back, and we kind of explained along the way. That's what we kind of wanted to keep everybody to know about what we were planning on doing once we had to take that building down and what we were going to leave it in, shape and leaving it. This was kind of the cheapest and most efficient way to tear that building down and then leave it in something that can be a complement to the community, the Hubbard that sits next to it. We've got the boys and girls club there that's still being served as well, also. I don't know that we ever approved anything officially.
I don't think most construction projects are going through the bulk, or just...
We're pretty good with the project, but we don't go through the actual particulars.
Right. The specifics was more than we leave up to our architects, engineers, but there's nothing wrong with having some input if you want to.
Any thoughts on the project?
Just in the future, I think we're going to need more buildings and school space, I would think. So grading it, leaving it flat, I kind of like that idea rather than spending money on doing something different on the property itself, because eventually I think we're going to need more buildings. And where we have the property, we save the taxpayers' money, and we don't have to go purchase more property. So if we're going to build a walkway and do certain things there, kind of spend money on top of what you're going to tear out again if you were going to put a building there or something like that. That's my concern, but that's looking in the future, so.
Yeah, we have, just for everybody, we have been working with the Hubbard Alumni Group just because we've had, and just to keep y'all, I think we've shared this along the way, the part of the building that will remain will include the hall that's, there'll be the, it's an old gym there that we use for maintenance and storage, and then there's a hall on the right, right, as you come in there, that's the old eighth-grade hall, which is our Boys and Girls Club. Then there's four sets of rooms, four rooms that you go as you tip toward the cafeteria. We're going to save, that's where we'll cut it off, we'll save the cafeteria. We'll have, we're going to do those meals for the Boys and Girls Club out of that cafeteria. Then the media center that we're able to save in the back will actually end up being kind of a William Hubbard historical area to keep off. They've had a hard time finding their place for their stuff to land. I think they've had it at the historical building, they've had it at the Hay House, not the Hay House, but the Hollis House. And so that will be a place that's kind of like a museum, and the county and city has kind of been working with us to partner with us on this project in some ways, as far as once we kind of do what we do and back out, then somebody's probably have to be there to man it, to be somebody there, and they've accepted that challenge for us.
And we've also talked about some media rooms for Hubbard alumni and also retired teachers.
And we're going to try to see if the city can help us in some way. Typically, this is through our Monroe Road stuff that we've been working on, and have some type of law enforcement presence under there, and possibly even help us with some maintenance of, you know, some things around the building if we can. But it's kind of been, they have been in those talks too. Eric has been there, county officials have been involved, so I was just under the impression everybody kind of knew what was going on, so if we did communicate that well, I apologize. But we've been working on this for, I don't know, about a year.
Oh, no more.
And just trying to make sure that we can, you know, we wanted to make sure we, and we could leave it flat there, there's no doubt about that, but I think part of what we wanted to work with the community with was the space that we had, if we could do it efficiently and with not much money to leave it, there's something that communicated to use as far as the walking park, like we have over there by the golf course, and then have a place for the kids in the Boys and Girls Club to play, and then the community can go there and play as well, because a lot of times we're going to have fences around the, maybe lock them when we do our safety stuff with the safety grants around Hubbard, so it'd be a place for kids to go play, so that was kind of the thought.
What's the cost of, in that number, how much of it is the teardown and grading versus the...
I guess eighty-five to ninety percent.
You don't have a number for that because it's an all-encompass, those numbers are not, it's all just in that one package number. I mean, he's gone out and gotten bids on from different contractors to do those elements, but the bid submitted is the total amount for the...
The vast majority is demo.
Yes.
Which is going to have to be done anyway.
Correct.
Just got to be done.
All right.
Does it need to be a motion?
Yes, we would have asked that, yeah, we'd ask that the recognition be approved for the low bid, which was Tristar.
I'll make that motion.
Second by Ms. Eva, fill it back. Any further discussion of questions? All in favor of accepting the low bid by Tristar America Incorporated, signify by raising your hand. All opposed? Thank you. I have one to vote. All right, our Perkins grant, Perkins Five. All right, Ms. Caldwell, if you would come up and talk to us about the Perkins Five Grant, Title One, and how that will affect us. I'll be sitting here.
Tonight, I'll talk a little bit about the newly reauthorized Perkins Five. Before I get into it though, I'd like to tell you a little bit of history about the Perkins Grant, so you can go to the next slide. So it initially started out back in nineteen seventeen as the Smith Hughes Act. It received first authorization for vocational funding. Later on, it was reauthorized as the Vocational Act of nineteen seventy-three, and then in nineteen eighty-four, it was renamed the Cardi Perkins Act. And so it's all still in an effort to fund vocational education, and it actually was named after a congressman from Kentucky who was a huge proponent of vocational education. And so since it's had that name, it's been reauthorized in nineteen ninety-eight, two thousand and six, and then most recently in July two thousand and eighteen, which replaced Perkins Four. So in the past, when I've come before you to have our local plan approved, it was always based on Perkins Four. So this will be, when we submit our local plan for FY twenty-one, it'll be based on Perkins Five. So what is the Perkins Act? It provides funding for current technical education at the secondary level and post-secondary level. On average, Georgia receives about forty-five million dollars a year, and it's split fifty-fifty between the post-secondary education and the secondary education. So Central Georgia Technical College, Southern Christian, all of those technical schools, they receive Perkins funding as well. So we actually officially began the transition to Perkins Five in July first, on July first of two thousand and nineteen. This is our transition year with full implementation in two thousand and twenty. So some of the requirements for Perkins Five, and I have this on a bigger slide a little bit later, comprehensive local needs assessment, which is huge. It is a different way of doing things, and I think for a lot of systems, it kind of was a culture shock, but we've done it a lot with our other federal programs where we invite all of our stakeholders to come in and provide what they call meaningful collaboration on how to spend our funds, so we'll continue to do that. It addresses gaps in academic and workforce needs, and it allocates funding based on those needs. It focuses on high-skill, high-wage, and in-demand careers, and it's talked about that meaningful collaboration again, and then we submit that local application. So this is just another graphic of that timeline that I was telling you about. July two thousand and eighteen, it was reauthorized by Congress. In the spring of two thousand and nineteen, Georgia had, every state had to submit a one-year transition plan, and so we did that. It went into effect on July two thousand and nineteen, and so we're in the process of working through our transition year. So in the spring of two thousand and twenty, the state of Georgia has to submit a four-year Perkins Five state plan, and so a lot of things are out for public review right now because it's a collaborative effort between regions and school districts and business and industry, so that's a process that we're working through. And then it will be fully implemented in July two thousand and twenty. Now, what are some major changes as far as Perkins Five is concerned? It changes the terminology from high demand to in-demand, and it denotes a more of a local effort, a collaborative regional effort, as opposed to it being on a national scale. So it's what's in-demand in our local region, in our local district, in our county, you know, in surrounding counties, what's in-demand. It has a bigger emphasis on CTA programs in rural areas and low-income areas. It seeks to align Perkins Five with ESSA, which is Every Student Succeeds Act, WIOA, which is the Workforce Innovation and Opportunity Act, and then HEA, which is the Higher Education Act. So it aligns all of those federal programs so that we are not doing four different things or doing four things, you know, four different times. We're all doing the same thing in a focused way so that we can just do the work one time, but it's meant for all of our federal programs. It allows Perkins funding down to grades five, but in Georgia, they kept it at grade six. Some states, it can move down to five. It commits funding of certain charter schools, and it requires that local, comprehensive local needs assessment every two years. Let me turn to the next page. So these are the six elements for the comprehensive needs assessment. Specifically though, it looks at labor market data, county and regional industry mix, occupational projections, and population trends. So, and I have this on another slide, we've met as a region, I've gone to about three or four different meetings where we meet as a region, and we talk with business and industry, we talk with other post-secondary education institutions, we talk with secondary education institutions, because this is meant to be, when you think about occupations, it's not always what just might be in your town, but it can be what's, it can be like a bedroom community, where you live here and you work somewhere else, and vice versa, where you might live in Mayfair, but you come here and work. So it's a regional effort to get the most bang for our buck. It also talks about student performance, performance on accountability indicators that I'll talk a little bit more in a minute, and then teacher recruitment, retention, and training. So when Ms. Roops was up earlier, she had the same crap, because it's meant to align everything. Because it's meant to align everything, for ESSA to be aligned, uh, MTSS, um, WIOA, HEA. Everything to be aligned using the same graphic where the child is the center. And we provide services for that, to to educate that whole child um, in in different areas. Whether it be um, through multi-tiered system of supports, whether it be through CTAE, Card Perkins. Um, just, it it's still, the child should be in the center of all of that. So it's, it's to bear a line all of our programs. Okay, so these are our indicators. And called Perkins, Perkins has always been, had indicators tied to to the bill. Um, they've added some new ones though. One thing that we'll have to show proficiency in biology. And um, we always had to show proficiency in ill, proficient, proficiency in ELA and math. But now they've added biology. And when I say proficient, I mean, you have to score it either proficient or distinguished.
It's a STEM in all of them.
Yes, that's the STEM part of it. Um, another thing, participation in work-based learning and CTAE pathway completion. And these two things have always been um, integrated into our CCRP after some degree. But they are their own separate indicators in the new Perkins five bill that will be uh, that will be monitored. So, some current steps. I attended Perkins, what they call Perkins five academy for CTAE directors. It was our first official meeting that we had for Perkins five. We actually sat in like a um, in our RISA. Um, and so we collaborated with other districts in our RISA. We made some um, plans and we've met one other time. We attended the Middle Georgia Economic Alliance meeting, um, it was held on November twenty-first. And so I was at that meeting along with um, Bo Gregory was there, representing the Development Authority. Um, we had lots of industry five below, Bass Pro Shop. Um, we had post-secondary institutions, uh, lots of our districts in our RISA. And so we met together to brainstorm, that that was our first step. Um, and so we'll continue with the collaboration of regional and local businesses, post-secondary institutions, secondary institutions, to be able to solicit input on preparing our workforce for for those in-demand careers. We have to have our, our ears um, to what business and industry is needing from our students. One thing we talked about at that meeting was those soft skills, um, you know, being able to come to work on time, um, multitasking. Um, being able to be teachable, taking constructive criticism. We talked about those types of things. So, you know, we are working, we're all sitting at the same table, making sure that we can prepare our students the best that we can to go out and be productive citizens. For me, it's a great exciting time in CTAE because um, it's almost as if, you know, we're, you know, we're being forced almost to do this collaboration.
A lot of the information I think and I hope that y'all be collecting and getting through this process. Will be able to use for our application for college and career.
Absolutely.
A lot of the things they're asking for, in fact, we're talking about, that we have to submit is the stuff that, I I hope that the alliance.
Right, and it actually does, it actually does. And so um, all of our collaboration is is in an effort to complete this local needs assessment. So there'll be some regional components of that that we'll do as a region, some district components and then some school components. And so we're, that's where we are in the process of just collaborating, gathering information. Um, looking at uh, employment trends, um, five tiers, five and ten-year trends. So that we can make some projections about the direction that we should go. Um, so on my last slide, I put a link, that is a live link. And it's where you can actually go and view the um, Perkins five core indicators. Um, to just kinda get an idea about what, how we'll be measured with Perkins five bills. Um, and it's, all, all of our federal funds will follow our comprehensive needs assessment. So whatever we determine to be our needs is how we'll spend our money. So it's a more streamlined process.
So this will be effective?
Well, this is actually effective right now, but it's a transition year. But it'll go into full effect in July first.
So we have to meet those uh, criteria in twenty-one.
Right, FY twenty-one.
Are you determining the needs of the community as far as the workforce and what business?
So it is, it can't be a standalone process. So it is not me, it is um, you know, it's uh, me as the CTAE director. But we have to meet with other CTAE directors, we have to meet with um, this, this meeting right here is one of the things that they ask us to do is to inform our board. Uh, we meet with our um, CTAE advisory committee on January twenty-third. I actually have a meeting Friday with uh, Matt Warner. He is the project manager for the High Demand Career Initiative, um, through the um, make to, through the Middle Georgia Economic Alliance. And he has uh, asked me could go where it comes. So this, you know, we're in the process of beginning that collaboration, it cannot be a standalone process. Um, it has to be what they call meaningful collaboration.
Multiple sets of data on that. I was just looking at the application, felt like if, if you're gonna choose to have something like that, you gotta have multiple sets of data to show that you've done. Survey, did that, it's all kinds of stuff on there.
Sounds good.
Yeah, we're good. Alright, thanks.
Thank you, Sandy.
I didn't know if this funding and with a different name had been around for over a hundred years.
Yes, raise your hands.
Alright, uh, we're gonna get a little report from the people over at the GSBA one conference. Just uh, anything that might you share with board?
I had asked just uh, just some uh, each board member to share. We, we went to some of the breakout sessions and uh, maybe something, maybe something that they went to the breakout session on. And then something that they gathered from the uh, from conference that could help us as a board moving forward. So uh, anybody, anybody want to talk? The only ones that stayed for the breakout session, so.
The mini-conference that I went to, I went to just investigate for, was all about uh, the Cox campus and courses that they have that they can help us um, know how to help parents with the children even before they're old. Through third grade, so that by third grade, when they enter fourth grade.
They can read.
That they will be on level. And they have, they have data to prove that what, I mean, they, they really know what they, how to do it.
Pre-natal too.
Mm-hmm, prenatal too. And they're, they're, it's free.
Well, the lap, uh, lap reading, Alicia said you're supposed to read, well, we're supposed to read to while they're in the stone, right?
Yeah.
The womb.
Well, they, they have all the data that, and it's free video training with actual uh, experiences and stuff. And I, I just wanna investigate it more.
Alright, next. I attended uh, school safety, I thought, but it was more board safety. Uh, as to, matter of fact, it wasn't, it's all about, it's uh, have creating a safe environment in our board meeting. Uh, there were some horror stories that they relayed from very high-rate citizens that showed up that uh, in the, thank goodness we have not really experienced or it to a very minor degree if anything along that lines. But uh, they, they, some security ideas which um, I'll share privately because that's a whole idea about security ideas, so. Uh, but uh, I will say one thing that they recommended highly, having a rear exit from, for the board. We're, we're sort of in a disadvantage there, I don't. But then they said put bulletproof windows in, so uh, I don't know if we can jump through those or not. And then we, we'd had a whole, before you replace the windows here, we'd had an easy time jumping out those.
It's true. This is true, this is true.
I don't think we're hated that much, yeah.
We, we, we can relay, Jackson and I can relay a story to you later on. We'd rather not revisit, but anyhow.
Well, you said limited to one to two minutes, so what else I do is give y'all a handout and talk about it a little bit. Alicia, you and Jackson and Chris.
Um, mine was the role of board of education and student achievement. And it was the Henry County Board of Education was doing the presenting. And I was struck by the similarities and also by the differences. You'll see there that first paragraph, Henry County is the eighth largest school district in Georgia. It's got forty-three thousand students, it's got um, approximately six thousand employees. Um, it just amazes me, I wish Jacob were here to hear about how many buses they run.
About eighty-four.
Huh?
About eighty-four here.
Here, compared to what this is and the facilities, the acres they own. Uh, eighty-seven point eight percent graduation rate. Well, all this kind of put in perspective, um, the last demographic, demographically fifty-two percent African-American, thirty percent white. There's Hispanic, mixed in the nation. But that next little insert, I copied a chart they gave. And Chris, this gives you something to think about, cause their growth has been phenomenally fast. And growth is coming our way, we don't know how fast it's gonna be. But if you look at those statistics from nineteen ninety-nine to two thousand and nineteen, everything has approximately doubled except for the budget, which has quadrupled. And some of that's inflation and some of that is just more kinds of things they have. Um, they have five-member board. They range from twenty-three years' experience to less than two years. The superintendent's been on board for two years. Three years ago, they said there was a vast disconnect, that the schools were all going in a different direction. The board members were all supporting what their district wanted to do. And they realized that that wasn't working, they need to unify their purpose. So I went through, um, outlined for you what process they followed. Everybody wrote their own beliefs about public education in Henry County. And then they came to consensus on those. They developed core beliefs and um, commitments. They have a little brochure that they put out. And it's about the board of education, tells me information about the board. And the inside is the core beliefs, that's the last page of the document I gave you. Because they said what their belief is and what they're committing as a board to do for that. They talked about reports of policy development, that some of their policies went back to the nineteen seventies, which sounds for me is us.
Long ago.
Uh, yeah, there. Uh, they've been having some assistance working in partnership with Georgia School Boards Association to revise their policies. At every board meeting, they look at some of the policies, analyze them and then work on them, see what changes need to be made. Just the policy development, um, procedures they followed. They look at operational policies and also they look at what they call reform policies. All of those, we talked a lot about except kind of the last one. It talks about digital citizenship and appropriate device use. And I don't know how much we addressed that in our policies. Um, then they talk about aligning the curriculum. The, they just, they looked at all their resources, all the instructional resources and decided whether they were core, they were supplemental or they were interventional. And that analysis of resources drives their instructional budget. And I've got some bullets down there at the bottom. I think the most important one's where I have a poorly drawn arrow in there. They said that using this process that they've gone through, it's still a work in progress. But they've gone from uh, governance team and the schools, the districts, the county, all kind of in separate, to being unified and unified. And that's what's so important, they kept emphasizing how important it was for all of us as board members to be on the same page. For all the schools to have the same goal, if you will, in mind for the school district. Um, the four steps, they talked about the journey continuing. They've started on building a long-range strategic plan. Well, we're here at the ballgame, a lot of the things that they are doing now, we have done. But that doesn't mean we can't revisit some of them and do them better. Their motto is expect exceptional, don't expect ordinary results. Just always be looking for those exceptional results. And I wrote the district goal down there for you. So if you want to read through that and stay, it's really quite interesting looking at the picture we got of Henry County.
When I drive through, when I have to stop at Eagles Landing for some traffic, I was thinking about all those kids.
Their, their school system may be doing better, they're doing okay, but they're traffic. They, they gone from having, not that many years ago, they had two high schools in Henry County.
Well, now they have eleven, now they have eleven. And have, twenty years ago, they had twenty-two schools and now they have fifty-six. They say, but I never saw it in writing and never heard it once, that they are the second fastest growing in the county in the state.
In the state?
Yeah, in the state.
Well, Gwinnett County was first in the nation not long ago.
Yeah, so they must be behind Gwinnett. So it's just.
I worry, that's the thing worried me most is that type.
Well, I think we need to look at that, we need to think about those kinds of things. We can't just be mired down in what we're doing now, we gotta be looking for the future. They have this one little brochure with like um, a fast facts, and that's quite interesting. I looked back and found that very vibe, I put something from there.
The, the enrollment wise, they're ten times bigger, larger than we are.
Yes.
In fact, ten times as far as funding.
When you say six thousand employees?
Yeah, five thousand, oh, five thousand nine hundred and eighty-seven.
I have a lot more folks than we got.
Five thousand nine hundred and eighty-seven this year. And that's up from three thousand, it's doubled in twenty years.
Alright, Eva?
I went to a sex trafficking class and how to recognize it. And um, the first thing she asked us is, how many of us that like who you're with would wanna be with somebody twenty, thirty or forty times a night? And most of the kids they target are six to twelve years old. And they're forced to do this. And um, she said, like, there was only two of us that raised our hand that we knew somebody that had ever been in sex trafficking. And she said, I bet you, once you hear what I've gotta say, that you'll start thinking, wow, you know, maybe I do know somebody. Cause a lot of times it's kids that are poor, that come to school, all of a sudden they're wearing new stuff. And they say, my daddy bought it, well daddy is the pimp. And uh, they said, you know, the teachers, the lunchroom workers, they can be listening and looking and kinda pinpoint some of these kids that may need to be rescued. And she goes around and um, does the training. And I saw Brad at the um, parade. And he said that he's interested in it and maybe they could partner with us and get her down here and give us all some training. Cause he said, um, well, and there was a guy from the governor's office. He said that they made eighty bus last year. And in those eighty bus, there was one hundred and sixty-eight children. And he said it's in all one hundred and fifty-nine counties. He said, don't think it's not in your county because it is. He said, it's happening right under your nose, you just need to be able to identify and help these kids. And they used to arrest these kids for, you know, what they were doing instead of helping them realize that they were victims. And so now they're trying to, you know, turn that around. But Ms. Kemp is looking for people to be on her task force and him and I have been talking. But yeah, I found that quite.
They're, they're signs, we've seen some, a lot of times it's uh, like tattooing and uh, they're uh, and a lot of times it's in other languages so that you know what it is.
And if they don't meet their quota, daddy beats them up when they get home.
So we can, we'll, Brad, try to get that maybe on some of our upcoming trainings.
Yeah, I, I have her card, but um.
Because that is a, that's a nationwide focus, but I know Governor Kemp, this is one of the things that he ran on and he's effectively working on right now to try to get it out of Georgia high school system, so.
And I, I went because I work with CASA, which is Kids, is Advocates for Kids and Foster Care. And through this, I've learned that um, there were senators working with DFACS to get the kids out of the homes and into sex trafficking. And I met a girl in the Bibb County Jail that had just gotten out of sex trafficking. So it's real, it's all around us.
Alright, well, thank y'all for sharing. Uh, it was a good conference, I thought day two was probably better than day one. But uh, thank y'all for being there, they had some wonderful uh, kids there, they spoke. And uh, we had a, a group from uh, Clayton County, sang the first day, was really good. Then we had uh.
Two-string quartet, a string ensemble.
Yeah, they were, they were wonderful, that was from uh.
What, Savannah one?
Yeah, Savannah, they, they, I actually taped that, it was so good.
And uh, Carrollton?
Carrollton City, yeah, that's what it was. But uh, and Samantha Fury from uh, Newton County was uh, chosen uh, as the superintendent of the year in state of Georgia. So we congratulate her. And uh, it's pretty much it, we had a good time and it's always good to get back.
Wonderful speaker, thanks for that.
It was.
Michael Ma, McGuff.
McGuff, it looks like McGuff, but it's McGuff.
Spell McGuff, but.
I enjoyed the uh, the student council, uh, student advisory.
Giving that feedback like kids get, and, and we do that here. Giving that feedback like kids get, and we do that here. But that's a good, because kids, honestly, they are the best people to talk to about things. A lot of times, they know, they just know. They know. And so that's up to us to tap that resource.
They won't phrase say it.
Alright, reminders. We've put up here, next board meeting is January fourteen, Christmas holidays, kids get out. The seventeenth is the last day. They'll be out the eighteenth through the third. They'll actually come back the sixth. And in-service will be the eighteenth. And we will actually, teachers and all the certified staff, everybody come back January second and third for in-service. And then the fine arts events are listed there for you. Just a reminder, we've got middle school going tonight, band concert Thursday. And then State of Education luncheon, invite everybody to come to that Friday. We're going to have students that we'll be highlighting for married persons and we'll be highlighting all the things that have gone well. And then some of our challenges moving forward as a school district, we'll be talking about Friday. Fine Arts Center lobby. And ten tennis Friday night. We're going to be giving two tickets away as a drawing at the State of Education address. And then elevator band concert next week. There's a lot going on. Get out there and support our kids when you can, but the style we have. If you might have anything else.
That reminds me, I never got my two tickets that it canceled.
We'll have to work with, maybe the two tickets, we'll work on that. Yep. Thank you for the reminders.
I got ten tennis tickets up.
And it's about a hundred and fifty seats left for ten tennis, which is, which is all, over a thousand seats or so, or occupied, so. They're going to meet with our kids too. I don't know if y'all know about that. They're meeting with them after school. And so they'll talk with them about what they do and how they got to be where they are. And they actually want to sing, maybe sing with them some, and maybe sing for them. I thought that's great, called a great masterclass. And Patrick does well setting that up, so the kids can talk to them.
And I think we'd be remiss if we didn't say something in the board meeting, not about how excellent the person's course was last night.
And also, that Christmas cabaret that was, I went to that. And I was amazed, and you were there.
Yes.
I'm just amazed every time I go to somebody to see the talent we have of this.
We're very lucky, our kids are wonderful. And so is our staff.
And our instructors, aren't they?
That's why they're wonderful.
And I'll just add on to that, the One Act Play is one of twenty schools in the state that's been chosen to perform at the Thesbian Conference, ThesCon, in Columbus in February. So a very hot honor for that to be on the program.